And we'll start out with this reviewing, prioritizing, establishing desired outcomes before we...anything on that? So then we'll go to recognition of groups and individuals. So Michael is here.
I'm here for the West Brattleboro Association.
And then they'll just do the consent agenda and go right to you. How's that? Okay, so approval of minutes and the warrants.
So moved. Second.
Questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Okay, Michael. I'm here.
Again, Michael Bosworth. I'm president and board of the West Brattleboro Association. And we embarked this year on more of an effort to sort of spruce up the village, in particular the historic village center. And we want to do some planting with some planters. So we're seeking places to put those planters. School department or school board or school owns part of that stretch along Western Avenue. So we're coming to you all to see if that's a possibility. That's one of our ideas. We're also looking at the flagpole, which is the old Academy School flagpole, which is, you know, no longer upright. And to take that on to another idea to straighten that up, we do have at least, well, we have one member of our board who remembers raising the flag on the old flagpole. So that's another idea. And just other, anything else that might help to spruce up the village center? If the flagpole were repaired, then the, another question is, would we put flags up there or not? Somebody, an artist in West Brattleboro suggested, would students want to make a flag? So these are other possibilities. Most immediately, I think we'll come into the, can we get permission as a way to get permission to put planters there? They would be movable planters. And is our, the school department, the school board, I should say, interested in getting the flagpole repaired?
So I think the first question is exactly where is the land and if we own that land? That was my thought. So which, which part of the land? The fire, I know where the flagpole is.
It's a, well, we're in the land right next to the flagpole.
So that's where you'd put the planters?
Right. I mean, we're looking at other land that's not, doesn't have to do with the school board and school design.
But that would be the one you're thinking of. So Ron and Barb happened to find anything more?
No, we have minutes from November 6, 2013, where we essentially said to the town that after discussion, the board felt it would be, make more sense for the town to actually own the land that the fire department is currently on and will be built on. Street board asked the town manager to have the town lawyer draw up a letter to that effect. We haven't received anything. I'm assuming it's from Bob Fisher. But essentially, we, by these minutes, ceded that land to the town.
Did you talk to the fire department?
No, I guess I may have, I may have been the wrong, I thought part of the land that the school department had went over to the town, but you were saying the school department, the school board was offering the whole piece of land and not the, not the parking lot, but the?
Right, right. So this came up in the discussion about what the town was doing at the fire station. And I think they came to talk about leasing of property and I think from the discussion it was, why don't we just cede it?
Yeah, I think the discussion was that they, when they went, they were gonna come and talk to us, but when they went back and looked at it, they had a 99-year lease and were only like seven or 10 years in. And they wanted to build, you know, the whole fire project. And they wanted to build on it. And we discussed, we said, well, why would we hold a lease on something if you're gonna build on it? That made no sense. So we wanted the town fire project to not be held up. I think that was our feeling, our being, we weren't a part of it yet, but the board's feeling. And then, so we said, well, then just, why don't you just have the land that makes sense? But the nerve hole.
We don't have any sort of documentation.
Well, they found, I think, if I remember correctly, I don't always, but I think I do this time. They found that there already was some document that the school district had, had agreed to, I don't know, for long-term lease or give the right to use or whatever, to the rest of the property. So that the parking lot area and the stuff coming over along this, along the road were already in the town's control, so they didn't have to do anything, which I think is why, maybe why Bob Fisher didn't come up with a kind of agreement, because it was already settled.
Well, at that meeting, in the minutes, the way it was left is that he was gonna draw something.
He wanted that, yeah.
Because what, what the school department had, forever town school board has right now is a lease with the fire department. And you were gonna alter, you were gonna change that and that lease and give it to them.
So they could build.
That's what he was gonna draw off.
So they could build.
So they could build and do whatever they wanted. You were giving it that unconditionally, unconditional, if I ask for some kind of reciprocation.
Well, you noted that that would be a good idea. I remember that, yeah.
What'd you get? Write our front?
We're still working on that. So the area, the area in the front is accessible from the sidewalk and there's a, there's a cement pathway that's perpendicular to the road, perpendicular to the sidewalk, that goes toward the flagpole. It's cement, about a four-foot walkway, okay? And if it's in that area, then the flagpole is adjacent area that you're looking for. Which is my understanding, that we were giving it that whole thing to them, because that little piece of land, you know, would not do us any good, but it may give them more land for different things they might do. My suggestion is that we control that or take, I would, I would recommend we make that, they, the town, whoever has control of that land, make that living memorial to firefighters.
With a flagpole?
Flagpole there, the fire department would put it up and put it down. In the nine years I've lived and was being, worked at Academy, I've never seen a flag fly there once, so.
Is there a flag on the fire station now?
Yes. So that would be, otherwise, I mean, someone's gotta be fair, a flagpole just to sit vacant doesn't really count.
So Michael, your question seemed to be a very easy one when we first started talking about it. Now I'm not sure if we can actually answer the question, because we might not have the land, or we probably don't.
Well, we, we probably need to follow through on what we did in November of 2013 and have the town draw up some paper to take over the land. I mean, you wouldn't have to wait for that to happen, to talk with them and see what they're interested in.
And it just got pushed aside, nothing's happened with the project.
As a select board person, they have to put you completely on the spot.
You put me on the spot.
Is that project still moving forward? Is there any?
It is, yeah, there, it is moving forward. In fact, that, that station part of it is, nothing's gonna change there, but we have to resolve the design for the police station if it's not gonna be on the back of the municipal side. We have to finish that design and then come back to the town, because it's a change in the, in the design.
Because the original was that they were gonna build like a new building at the West Brattleboro spot, right?
And they still are.
So that, that is still?
That's still, yeah, yeah, that'll still happen.
All right. Well, 'cause if it weren't happening, I suppose we should maybe think about whether we wanna ask for the land back, if they're gonna use it.
Or ask them if you can put flower boxes in until, planters until the project's finished. You just have to find out who's the person that can say yes.
But regardless, I do think, I do like the idea of the town, the West Brattleboro Association, the town schools, the fire department, all of us having a nice aspect there.
Would you be able to say yes to him now? Just in case it is the town? So in case it is Brattleboro Town's land, so in case you go to the fire department and they say no, go back to Brattleboro Town School District? Could you give him the yes from here, if you're not?
Or no? Make a motion that if it's up to us, the answer's yes.
Or just a time period that we review it, so you know that it might be temporary, but I've spent too much time asking. I mean, it seems like a very simple.
I know.
Plus, that should probably be able to happen and then, as long as there's contingencies, then.
Seek forgiveness.
I know, that's what I was just saying, maybe you should just go plant and not ask?
Lot's immovable.
Yeah.
We have people, we have people.
People in.
Couple of plot plots that are movable.
All right, so Mark, Dave had a motion.
I have one question.
Oh, yeah.
There's a fire, there's a flagpole out in front of the fire department, they fly flags on. There's one in front of the school, they fly flags on. Is this a third flagpole?
It's the one that's bent over, so it is a third.
It's a wooden flagpole.
Can it be removed? Is it, it's redundant, it sounds like, and it's sold to the planters without going to the expense of, unless there's some caveat that you can't.
One could remove it, one could replace it.
One could do either.
One could let it sit?
Well, that's a, yeah.
About a year and a half.
About a year and a half, but.
I'm just thinking, if you've got three flagpoles and one standing out by itself, not doing a lot of anything.
I think that what Michael's raised, that there's some historic value to this with old wooden flagpole. And his, one of his requests is to replace it and make use of it.
All right. Well, I guess we leave that up to the West.
We'll leave that up to them.
Do you prefer, with the actual owners of the land?
Well, to what to do to the fire, the flagpole. But if we could do the motion, Dave, then.
I'll support Dave's motion.
So do you have a specific for poor Jane?
Oh, what is the motion, Jane?
Do you have any motion written down, Jane? No.
'Cause I didn't really, I said we could make a motion.
A motion to.
Beautify the area.
Approve, or allow, West Brattleboro.
Association to.
Association to.
Place flower pots and remove or fix flagpole.
Flower expression.
Does that work?
Flower planters.
Comma contingent on, is that what? Contingent on the fact that we actually own the.
It's the board.
Contingent on relevance.
Does that work, Ron? Is this a normal motion for most of your support meetings?
No, it's not normal. But there is.
Are you asking that if the, the flagpole wants, needs to be repaired, that the owners of the land pay for that? Or you say your organization will?
I think we would pay for it, try to pay for it.
Probably do the work.
This is why I feel bad about even having to have a long visit. Did we have a second to that motion?
We did.
And do we have any more discussion? All in favor? Motion has approved.
Thank you.
So, yeah, and, yeah, contingently. And then if we have anything that the schools can help with and do something, or if you make it into this firefighter memorial and maybe?
Yeah, I don't think we would take that project out of, yeah, that'd be an interesting project, too. And maybe just talk to Mike Ficassi, see what he thinks about the flagpole issue.
Tell me it can be a memorial to his chiefhood and his group there.
Well, there are a couple of retired chiefs that might have something to say about that.
Jumping to the weird. All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Okay. Onto the administrative reports, unless, Ron, did you have anything urgent that you wanted us to swap anywhere or?
No, I'm waiting for a motion from Frank Rucker, who's supposed to send me about the opening of a new bank account at People's United. But I'll wait for that until that comes. And then I have some brief notes on this. From the principals first.
Deb, here on this side.
Thank you.
Start with you.
No, this is for the management. So there's a lot happening at Early Education Services. And it very much centers around a couple of things. One, some money that's coming through the state for pre-K, public pre-K expansion. And the other is a combination of our self-assessment, our annual self-assessment activities, the information that we're gleaning from that. And an ongoing assessment process that the management team has been involved in really over the course of this program year. And it all is sort of coming together in a nice package. And I would love to say we'll just roll out that way, but I, I know that that's a little bit idealistic in any event. What we are looking at is, A, accessing the public pre-K money that is available to all of the Head Start programs as one sub-grantee, and also the public schools are also sub-grantees. So under the Head Start piece, we are, we have put together a proposal that is being reviewed by the state to access funds for our four-year-olds who are in our Westminster classroom and at our Canal Street site. So this is specifically for four-year-olds. And with it comes requirements that are very much like the existing Act 62. So there needs to be a licensed early childhood teacher, a Vermont licensed specialist, and, you know, adherence to the Vermont, Vermont Early Learning Standards and all of the other things that, that we are currently doing. And, and the money is available for four years. So the idea that we're looking at, that we proposed, is to actually hire an assistant to the education manager, who would be an education coordinator, who would have that certification, and then work over the next few years to help all of our lead teachers in our preschool classrooms earn that certification. And take over the Sprouts classroom, which is slated to close at the end of June. So in that classroom, there, there are currently six Head Start children. We have a partnership with Sprouts as we do with Wesby Nursery and Brattleboro Nursery. So six of those children will actually be filtered into our classrooms at Canal Street over the summer, because we operate currently a combination of full-day full-year slots and half-day school-year slots. So there will be some openings, openings for those children who otherwise lose their services come the end of June, so they can transition over. And, and then in, at the beginning of the school year in the fall, we will open a fourth classroom at Canal Street. And so all of the four classrooms at Canal Street will have 16 children. And we are projecting that approximately half of those will be four-year-olds who, who will then help us to leverage that fund, that money. In addition to that, looking at the staffing patterns that we currently have and the number of high-needs, highly challenged children, we are proposing a staggered composition that's a little different than what we do now. As I just mentioned, we do Westminster, for instance, is, we have 32 children, 16 are there half-day school year, and the other 16 are there full-day full-year. That's, that's a model that has worked well. At Canal Street, we have, in a classroom of 16, perhaps 13 children who are there full day and three who are half-day. And so there are a high number of children still there year-round, full day, lots of energy. Not always the best situation for some of the children, because they're long days for them. Look, they, sometimes they're, they're longer than they are. So it turns over eight-hour shift. So we are looking at a staggered enrollment, where we will continue to have the full-day year-round children, and we will continue to have the half-day schoolchildren. But there will be a third category, which is a three-quarter mix, so that we will have children who are there the school year and basically emulate the same schedule as, as the schools do. So children will be at Canal Street in the same hours that they would be in an elementary school program in just the school year. So that is the model that we're working on. And we are, I am feeling very hopeful that this will finally give us a nudge in the direction that we've been wanting to do for a very long time, in that this money will give us the opportunity to pay higher teacher salaries that are more reflective of what the public school teachers make. So that is a big deal, and it has required a great deal of effort and teamwork on the part of the managers and actually the staff. We had a World, our annual World Cafe event last Wednesday, and we, we had asked some preliminary questions of the staff before that around this month to get some feedback from them. And at the World Cafe, we used data, and we did a little differently than we have in the past. We, we had teams stay together at tables with one facilitator this time, and we gave the teams data. And we, in eight-minute increments, looked at the data, discussed the data, and then at the end fed out three, three key points that each of the table teams brought out in their conversations. And the data, basically, I don't, I don't have it compiled and ready to give you, but I can just tell you that one particular strength that we're really proud of is that in our teaching strategies goal data, which is our, our web-based assessment system for measuring the progress of children, that is a national model and it's a mandated Vermont model, we, even though, just as, just as we've seen in the rest of the district, even though we have a high number of children with high, with high needs, their growth is fairly remarkable. So we are doing some things really well. And the highest, the highest scores this time, last year they were in social-emotional. They seem to have leveled up a little bit, but the higher scores were in math and literacy, math and literature kinds of things. So those were, those were really positive outcomes and as part of the discussion, it helped us to kind of think about what we want to put in our strategic plan for next year. Let's see, what else is left? So we're, there's a lot that we're doing. We're still looking for a teacher in Westminster. We're unable to find out their teacher. We are, of course, operating legally. We, we, we'd like to have a free teacher, but we only have eight students there, eight infants and toddlers, with two teachers. So again, I'm just gonna shout out for anybody who knows anyone who might be qualified and interested, we still have that vacancy. And I guess the, the last piece that I'll report to you tonight is that we had to temporarily, temporarily relocate our infant toddler classroom from BUHS last week to the playroom here because of the heating issue. And believe it or not, even though we're in May, the classroom, the classroom was cold. And we do, by state law, have to maintain the, the temperature of the classroom, especially with infants and toddlers, at, I think it's around 70. The classroom was 60. So we were able to, again, with great thanks to the efforts of the EBS staff and a great deal of teamwork, along with our state licenser, in, in one day, move the entire classroom here and have it licensed. And we needed the fire marshal here, and we needed, you know, to make runs back and forth to Brown and Roberts for carbon monoxide, alarm system or whatever it is. And, but I was really impressed with how quickly and smoothly that whole transition took. And then, of course, the next day, the heat went back on at ITC. So we, we relicensed the setup for one day and moved the children, and then by the end of the week, they're back in their home classroom. So things have been pretty busy.
And that brings up a question that I have, Ron, that you might know more about, but before, but listening to Deb and following that four-year-old money coming down from the state, and I know what they're doing with it, and this, then I, I was wondering myself whether that was all the money coming into, but then I saw a little article in the newspaper that said it had been determined whether it was going.
We have an application in with the private preschool providers that are part of our partnership. So it's in addition to what Deb was just talking about, similar to grant. Fewer students that are eligible, and we haven't, we haven't heard back yet whether we can afford them.
So it brings up two questions. So is it X amount of money for the whole state and then it's, the state determines who gets it based on merit, or is it determined?
It's based on merit and it's based on essentially student numbers, student numbers in need.
In need.
Because we had originally put together a proposal that would be like $400,000 over the four years, but based on the numbers of students, were a much smaller number than what we had into spend that we could use the grant for. So we had to pare it back, and I think it's maybe $100,000 over four years.
$100,000 over four years is all getting out of, out of the four-year-old?
It's all we would be eligible for.
So what was the eligibility criteria?
200%.
Yeah, and four-year-old.
200% of the?
Above the poverty.
200% of the poverty guidelines. And they have to be four years old. And then, then of course, you know, then we, then we as the providers have to, have to adhere to certain requirements, like, and it's not an issue so much. But there has to be a full-day program offered. So in the case of the partnerships that the school district are honoring, it would actually be adding hours. So Wesby Nursery, for instance, which runs a half-day program, is actually going to be running an extended day. So, so the, the program day has to, has to replicate what's happening in the public schools in terms of operating hours and, and also teacher credential.
So are we the only ones in the, in the supervising region? Just Brattleboro that's getting some of that?
No, it would be, it would be servicing students in the other S U towns.
But they'd have to come to the partners.
That are with those partners.
So anybody, like somebody in Putney could do it, but they might have to come to Wesby to do it, or whatever?
No, I mean, you've got Putney students, Vernon students, Guilford students that are accessing some of the partnerships in Brattleboro, but they also have their own town programs.
And so those guys are getting some of the same money coming down to?
I think we're actually focused on three programs.
Wesby?
Wesby.
Was it Mulberry Bush?
Mulberry Bush at the retreat. And a third.
I don't even remember what Jane was talking, but I think she, I do agree that the three.
So I guess that my final question was whether that was something that, I don't know if we, as a board, would have any input on, or any thoughts about?
You would, well, I don't know. We had a lot of thoughts that were kind of changed based on the meeting that we had with the state program administrators that essentially said we had to pare back our proposal based on their guidelines. And the providers were disappointed, I think, that, you know, they had thought there'd be more money that they could access. I think when we, we've just resubmitted our proposal, I can get you a copy, you can take a look at it and, you can review it. I don't, I don't know that you have any input on it, really.
So the state was here again today. They're making the rounds, because the proposals are being in. And now, there is a cap on this, on this, on this grant, there is a cap. And they're trying to figure it out. And everybody proposed something different. So now they're asking us to sort of adhere to one template, which is what I did today. And they, the state, the deadline for their submission to the federal government was April 1st, but Vermont requested an extension. So the extension is May 15. So between now and May 15, the team at the state level has to consider all of these proposals with the sub-grantees for our Head Start programs and public schools, and make it work financially. So there will continue to be back and forth negotiations once they start adding up the And because it is a four-year grant, there are opportunities. You know, we're projecting after four years. So we, you know, we can propose what we proposed. So we, you know, we can propose what we proposed for four years, how that would look. And the same thing, I think, would be true of the public schools in that there is potential for expansion as the years go on. The other nice thing that's happening with this state is that Act 166, which will be replacing Act 62, gives, they're allocating $3,000 per child per year. And in that case, it's a three- or four-year-old. And it's any, this is all toward the goal of universal preschool. So any child, again, meeting the same kinds of qualifications will yield the provider $3,000 per year per child. And in that case, there was sort of two rounds. One is that you can pre-qualify now, the school districts have to do this, so that the money would start rolling in next year. And in the case of EES, we need to access the money through that avenue. So we need to make sure that we have met those pre-qualifications and then we go in sort of the same way that Act 62 is happening now. And if the schools, public schools choose not to be in that first round then a year from now, they will be. And if they're choosing not to this year, the Act 62 still applies. So my point is there are lots of opportunities and financial benefits that are coming in that allow for more creative programming and partnerships in the next few years.
So perhaps what I was thinking was coming, that I saw in the paper, what you're explaining is not really what it is. So the three- and four-year-old money that they're talking about, the universal pre-K is really not out yet? And that's not really that money that you're talking about?
Well, it's all part of what I would call the move toward universal preschool, but it's not in one pot of money. So the money, the public pre-K money that's available right now is, you know, as I described in as Ron was... And then the Acts, and there's still Act 62 money out there that actually the same part, some of the same partnerships that the public schools are involved in get. So they would still continue to get that and then the public pre-K dollars that, the public pre-K dollars are attached only to four-year-olds and only those who live at the 200% poverty level. The Act 166 money is for any three- and four-year-old in the state. And so, I don't know if I answered your question. It's like a, you know, hologram to figure it out, but...
But just, so we are already accessing that $3,000 for the pre-K providers. That's not new for us.
That's the one that goes to the partnership?
Yeah. You get kind of, it's a little bit different now, but it's kind of like the ADM revenue, the student count revenues from the state, and we're required to then distribute that $3,000 per student to those providers that we partner with. So that would continue.
And the new pieces that have started would come into the folds of that.
So my bottom-line conclusion here, if I'm understanding correctly, is where I thought there might be more money coming from the state, you're telling me there really isn't?
No, there really is. There really is. The public pre-K money is new money and the Act 166, well, that's not, in this community, it will be new for EES because we don't access that money right now in this public school district. We do access the money in Rockingham towns, but the Act 62 leaves the negotiations up to the providers and the public schools. So in the case of Brattleboro, you're generous and you're honoring the intent, it's $3,000 you're giving, $3,000 per child. In the case of Rockingham, they give us a check for $2,000 period for all of our children. It's not, we're not getting $3,000 per child like we're doing here. Act 166 changes that and says you get $3,000 per child. So there will be, there will be money. There will be money for EES in that configuration and it may open more opportunities for more partners, but the partners have to meet the qualifications. They have to have that licensed teacher. They have to be open for a certain number of hours a day. And the idea is that this public pre-K dollars, these dollars, along with Race to the Top money, will encourage more providers to become highly qualified in order to access that money. There will be more money in this community ultimately.
Anybody else have questions or is really just me that's been trying to sort through this in my head? That's it?
Oh, can I ask a question? So next, the year after, the year out, there's money that would be available for, potentially for like a public school to, for a pre-K?
Yes. Yes.
What's not in the works for the next school year, the year after, would be like the 16th, 17th school?
I mean, the schools have been doing this, and this grant, like a three-year grant period for startup funds to do that. So the $3,000 has always been there since we've been in partnership, probably for eight years.
So to answer your question, right now, it's too late to get in on the public pre-K to do that, but the Act 166, and I understand this decision, is not one of the first up. We're not going to, you know, there's an opportunity to say yes right now or there's an opportunity to wait for another year. And I think we're waiting another year. So when that happens, you could ultimately open a preschool and get $3,000 per three-year-old and per four-year-old to run a classroom.
In kind of a concept that we haven't had a chance to talk about much, but the idea of moving those preschool classes, that's not classes into the school?
Yes, I would love to do that and I would love to do a mix of Head Start and non, if you could. Yes.
So with that, eventually we're closing that Bird Street?
Not necessarily. Here's what the eventual picture looks like, and I'm shooting out a decade. I think that there will be universal preschool in this country and I think that's where all of this is really heading to. And so Head Start programs will be more for the Head Start programs and all of the preschool operations will be, I think that's the vision of this country, will be operated by the public schools and I can't disagree with that.
Kind of like Ken, yeah. It wasn't in that... Is this going to represent retrofitting our current schools?
Absolutely.
Well, not...
I mean, ultimately, we didn't plan it. On the weekend, we did it in Putney. We did a little retrofitting, you know, we made sure there was a bathroom in the classroom. Not huge, not huge. I mean, Canal Street was an elementary school and we operate three classrooms there right now. So that's how I envisioned it would be.
I'm just trying to envision smaller. So we'll keep you abreast of, as we go forward on this, and any sort of financial implication. I know Frank has worked with Maurice Duncan-Hawley and I think Deb, kind of stuff, you know, what I'd like to do is bring everybody together and just make sure we understand the implications of, so what is the impact, if any, on the Brattleboro town budget where we currently supply $50,000 to early ed services? There is some requirement...
But is that running money that we supply or does money come through?
No, it's local money that goes to Head Start. This legislation is changing that a little bit and there is more of a requirement for local funds to support Head Start, even though there's the federal money that does that. So as we get further into it, I'm going to want to look at the financial implications and make sure that you're all aware of that. But that's at least that you're aware of.
So one final question. I thought the state of Vermont did not mandate kindergarten.
No.
So we're...
It just makes you do it.
Well, it's kind of strange. They don't make you do it though.
They don't.
Kindergarten, you don't...
Makes sense to do it.
But we're now saying that three- and four-year-olds should also be...
We're not mandating it, we're just saying that universal preschool is available. We're not requiring it.
And when we entered into those partnerships eight years ago, it made sense to do it because, for three reasons again, more money that was coming into the district because of the child count, money going to reduce tuition for parents in professional development for the staff of those preschool teachers with the idea that quality preschool is going to impact the transition to kindergarten. So it's not mandatory, but it makes sense to do it. And financially, it makes sense to do it. And that's what these grants will do more of.
Thank you, Deb. I have a lot of questions.
Exciting future.
Yes. Getting into your way, Jen.
Maya? Okay. Start with our monthly report. Mind if you wanted to come up attendance later and, oh, classroom here?
Yeah, yeah.
And then MTS later or?
Later.
Okay. Okay. Great question. So more later. Why don't you share just a few highlights from the past couple of weeks? Hopefully you all have heard Oak Grove Kids on WTSA with their announcement. Have you been there?
I don't listen.
So our kids have done those public service announcements about recycling and going green. It's pretty awesome to be at camp. I'll send you a link if you'd like.
Yes, you bet.
It was also part of, so on April 28th, in celebration of Green Up Day, which happened over a long time for us, for the break, our entire school did a Green Up Day. I think we got a couple of photos in the reformer. But we organized it in 25-minute shifts, I guess, so every class went out. So we had this really busy week where it was, we had different things happening every day. We had Walk the School Day, a Walking Day, so all the kids went out and washed and then thankfully the weather agreed. But the Green Up Day, what I wanted to highlight is, Green Up Day happened on a Tuesday and then our Walking Day was on a Wednesday. And so many community members saw our students out picking up trash all over the neighborhood that many, I probably had a half a dozen families, like most of them older people, came and walked with our kids the next day just because they saw them out there and said, "Oh, can I join in?" And we said, "Absolutely." And they came in. So it was just this really great, two days in a row of just like how important that is for a community and a neighborhood to have kids out and about and being part of the greater school community beyond the walls of Oak Grove. So really fantastic. We also had a PBIS celebration. We're over 30,000 Robys now. And we tried, we had a day of Reverse Roby Day. So the students were all given the tokens and they had to give them to adults. So they were recognizing adults throughout the day. So the adults got a little competitive about why we dogged them in town. So it was a very strange for the kids, but I think a lot of them were just used to being treated well, so they didn't necessarily like, they didn't give them up easily. They were tough with that. And then, of course, we had Diversity Day downtown, so our kids were preparing for that and we had artwork out. So it's just been a lot of community, it's like spring came and all these community things are happening, we have them outside. So it's been a lot of fun as part of our monthly theme. Our monthly theme on our guiding principles is be safe. And we had our second annual helmet fashion show, which if you're adults, including yours clearly, got to wear safety gear. And we have a fashion show and it's on our blog. If you'd like to embarrass me on your own free time, go ahead and check that out. But it's just these great spirit things that really come out when you're building community. Want to share that? Monthly report in front of you. I told you, we had our Play Works class, was something I was really excited about, got positive feedback and begging for more. And once people kind of found out about it, and this was the class where we did a parent and a child together and they, so the parent and child had to be, it's kind of two, had to come together to participate in the Play Works class and they made pottery. And then we had a special event yesterday that they came back and highlighted all the work that they had done after Genovale. So she came back for another day, Bonnie did some Play Works. And as parents heard, we said, "Open me up for another for this school year." I don't know if you can, but it was just a great, Bonnie was wonderful to work with and she incorporated our guiding principles. So we had a theme each week that she was there about, you know, be safe, be kind, respectful, talked about all that. So just really that whole community, school, school community. And I think, I know we're going to talk, we have a couple of other things on our agenda together, so I can stop there.
Thanks, Jen.
Thanks.
So I'll go through the report and then at the end I have a couple of personnel things to share. So I actually wanted to start with Arts Night, seems like a long time ago, April 15th. We had a terrific Arts Night. We had a, the place was packed and it was a really good feeling at Green Street School. Tony Speranza did a great job, organ, we started in the gymnasium with a bunch of musical efforts that Tony helped put together and orchestrate. It really showed some nice collaboration that we've been doing in the town. We had some student performances, of students who've been working with the Brattleboro Music Center, which was really nice. We've been working with some high school students, the Renegade Acapella Group had been doing an after-school mentorship with a group of students. So they did a collaboration together at Arts Night, which really stole the show. I think at the last meeting, Dave, you asked me the students' names and then you caught me off-guard, but Christina Myena, Kia DeBruin, and Casey Greenly did a lot of good legwork. So that was a really cool night. And the hallways look great. Kathy Krebsdahl, I want to give her kudos for, really good night and that led us into spring break. Upon coming back, major emphasis from our PTO for the past three months has been our Tulutrop fundraiser, which has turned into this great traditional Green Street School community builder. We had our Tulutrop event this Saturday, this past Saturday on May 2nd. Thank you Jill and Kim and Ron for running with us. We had over 200 runners. I think we grossed close to $8,000. It was a great day. I was really proud of the school. And our PTO, I just want to highlight the amount of work and hours and energy that they put into that event in collaboration with staff was really, really remarkable. Hundreds of hours. And I think at times people don't realize how much goes into an event like that, but, you know, a handful of people really made a huge event come off of the well. We have a Girls on the Run team at the school, 15 students. Just want to point out, May 16th, they'll be running. Our Girls on the Run did a really cool thing for Tulutrop, actually. Their community project was to, they set up a car wash right at the school after one of our school days and in an hour's time, they raised over $300 that they donated to the Tulutrop. It's a really great idea. Our fourth and final session of after-school tutoring has begun this week. I'd like to point out, we had an artist in residence with our very own Todd Roach, April 3rd, 10th, and 17th, three full days. And it was the second year in a row that we've worked with Todd and it was great. It was great. Some of the other things to be on the lookout for, actually, which happened today, Walk and Roll to School Day. We had over 60 students either walk, ride a bike, or actually hop on a pogo stick to school this morning. There was one student that did that. And...
Oh, no, no, my pogo stick days are longer. Long past.
Of course, our Walk and Roll to School Day today occurred when Union Hill was shut down. So that created a little bit of a last-minute changes we had to make, but it was actually cool. It got me and a few other staff members out on the Western Ave helping at the crosswalks, which is actually a fun way to start the day. And two other events coming up, tomorrow night, we're having a Science Night at the school from 5:30 to 7:00 in the gymnasium, interactive... Interactive experiments for families, all families of all ages. We'll be serving pizza for free at 5:30, so looking for a great turnout. And then, this Saturday at the school, again in the gym, our PTO will be sponsoring and make it take it craft of them. So, those are kind of the comings and goings of Green Street School lately.
What kind of the drama performances? The family one, I guess.
Oh, thank you for pointing that out. Yeah, May 11th, we'll have a, we have a Drama Club that we started this year. We'll have a school performance, and that will be in the afternoon. And then, the 12th, I believe the start time for that is 6 o'clock, but if that is inaccurate, I'll email that to everybody. So, going around, Deborah Rosswhite, great teacher for our school, sixth grade teacher, will be resigning at the end of the year. She's accepted a position in Westminster, which is her community. That's where she lives, so she's going closer to home, and I'm happy for her. But that's a, that's a big lot. She's a very good teacher. And I also have some info on a new hire.
I'm going to give you one on Jim Olson as well, who resigned from Oak Grove. We can do motions to approve their resignations.
Do you know that person already?
Jen's known about this.
I've known. I'm sorry, I forgot to put in my report if they're doing together. I'm sorry to my if I just, Jim Olson has been my behavior specialist. He came to me for the last four years because of GCBA, his horse of bike fitness. He's been a phenomenal addition to the school. It's a huge loss for me to have him leave, but he's starting his own program, his own school called The Bell Center, and offering therapeutic services and working with social PD and working with autism population and can't stand the way someone screams, so.
A huge loss, but... You could hire Shelley away from home.
I thought he was a recovery reporter for Daily Planet.
Jimmy. So, I would say maybe we can do those.
Those two together?
Yeah.
So, if we had a motion to accept with regret those resignations?
So moved.
And I know we've talked every once in a while, I guess it's a separate discussion, so, well, I'll put it in this discussion if we can, if we have a second? Yeah. I was wondering actually why we do this practice of accepting with these resignations?
You know, I think it's just tradition, and it's for you to make sure we let you know that these people are leaving.
And then, I know we've mumbled every once in a while about not rehiring positions automatically.
Well, not these kind.
Right. I just wonder maybe when we, if we make it a practice, whether we accept a resignation of just understanding whether that would be a position that's for being rehired or...
Yeah, I'm going to later on show you some class sizes that you've been asked about, and that, I think, opens up the conversation also. If a sixth grade teacher resigns, why we have to replace that person. Is that different than somebody not, just not returning the contract or leaving that way? You know, the contract's bought, and then people send them back in, and they, if they're not returning, do they generally send a letter like that? Like, is that all the only new teachers we're going to have next year, as far as we know? Well, we're going to hear about some. Somebody must have left.
Yeah. So, I'm presenting a name.
Well, so, before we do that, we should vote, right?
Yes.
So, all in favor of accepting these resignations?
Hi.
Okay. We'll carry on to Mark's next thing. Is there copy for everybody, or?
Yep, that will be it.
So, we have a one-year position in the second grade. Sarah Rosso's taken a one-year leave to be with her child, which she's expecting very soon. So, proposing Allison Bissonette. She's currently works at Oak Grove as a paraprofessional, but did cover maternity leave in the kindergarten this year.
At Oak Grove?
At Oak Grove as well. Graduated Keene State College. Great energy, did a great job in her interview, and I'm excited to bring her on board at Green Street School.
Great references from?
Yes.
Even from Jen, so she knew about it.
Oh, Alice Bonn, I mean, she'd be great.
So, and that answers what I think David left. So, we're hiring this person for one year, and then the other person has a maternity leave and automatically comes back. And then, this person doesn't have a job anymore, and would have a primary. Okay, so we actually did a motion to accept, to approve this hiring?
So moved.
Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Do you want these returned?
Yeah.
Todd, did you second that?
I did.
It was kind of quiet. All right.
No, I don't know. It's like, if you did, what would happen?
I was just wondering that, if you just don't accept the resignation.
Sorry, you're still going to order for us. No, I was just asking the question about, that just seems so automatic, but what if you actually looked at something and you knew, you know, you had concerns about it? Is that our place to question her? I was just wondering if there was protocol, what way you'd do it. I have no reservations about that at all.
And when I said you'd go into a section and say that about personnel, we'll talk about that.
But we would, realistically, that's why I brought up the whole point of, you know, I know Dave has mentioned several times about watching numbers and whether we're rehiring automatically. And realistically, I would hate for us as a board to suddenly come up with something that you've gone through the whole process and say, "Wait a minute. We didn't think we were going to hire that physician, or we don't want to hire that physician." And that would put us in, says I just want to make sure we have a process, so nobody's hung out there funny.
It wouldn't, I mean, it wouldn't really happen that way, because we don't really have anything to do with the hiring. I mean, ultimately, we'd have to say, you know, if we really wanted to reduce physicians, we'd have to just give you a number and say, "We want six fewer teachers" or something.
But we could technically say to somebody's hire when they came up, "Look, we didn't think we were going to hire that physician," and we could refuse, right?
We would want to have that information way before...
Way before achieving a position.
That's what I'm saying, but technically, we could do that.
Again, the proper protocol, I mean, during the budget process, prior to the budget adoption, but not now.
Then why do we actually approve somebody's hire?
I think it's just a formality. And really, there's no legal or statutory.
Statute does require the board to approve superintendent.
I think it's important information for you to...
Don't disagree with that at all, but I think Todd's question just kind of, you know, brought the other ones too, like, why do we go through that process? I mean, but technically, we could say, "Look, we said we're not going to hire that physician, and we brought it forward." We could, as a board, say, "No, we don't want that position." You know, we'd not need a good practice between all of us of how we work, but I think that's why it's there. No.
That's not the intent of why it's there.
Not, no, but it could be done. So, then what's the...
Well, then, if we had the information beforehand, we wouldn't...
It wouldn't happen.
Exactly, and that would be my goal to do that, but that's what I'm saying. So, why then, why else have that stuff?
Well, the date that these people are hired, first off, it's statutory, but the date, the date that you approve them is the data. They go in record data higher, I believe, so during the prison grift, for example, that date is very important.
Okay, so that would be a specific reason that we're...
That's the date of hire, but I believe, I want to just state law that, that they're not hired until...
The board's...
They may not processize us in the summer to do...
To do it over.
We're talking about a couple of different scenarios. The one with the not hiring the same physician, you would think that would be happening when we're talking about budgets and looking forward. And there'd be some understanding, like saying, "Okay, next year, we're not looking to rehire this physician." You would have that information. That's one, that is one issue. The other issue is, someone knows a candidate and has information that doesn't feel good about that candidate, and you have executives. So, it's really a couple of different things.
I did, right.
And you have an outlet for both.
Yeah.
And the resignation was the other discussion. There's several different things, but it's funny of us, because I've often sat here thinking too, like, Ken, so what, we don't accept the resignation? And can't stop working. What is the point of this exercise?
Well, I can see the resignation, it's rather like towards acknowledging a job well done by the teacher that's going on some business.
I think that's probably what happens.
Well, and I suppose too, if someone rescinds their resignation and we've already accepted it, then we'd have to go through rehiring, right? And we can't really rescind it.
So, either that or we...
So, there would be, there's a legal thing there too.
So, speaking of hiring, I'll stop my report by asking if you hire someone. We have an academic support teacher by name, Linda Boyle, who's been with us for, I think, 14 years. They're retiring. And academic support people used to be called Title I teachers. Most of the funding for them comes from Title I. I think it's about 80% right now in Pratttown. This person, 80% of her salary roughly will be paid for by Title I funds. So, this is to replace a retiring teacher. Her name is Rachel Cliffman. She's presently teaching in London. And I didn't know if you'd ever teach her. It was a great trip, thank you. We Skyped. We talked on the phone via Skype. So, we did a Skype interviews. And she looks great. She has a lot of strengths that will translate very well to academy school.
She wants to move to Vermont.
Yeah, she's from the area, so she's moving back. She's taught abroad for four years, I think it is, and she's moving back. She's somewhat known to some folks in the school community, has worked with ESL students. So, and she's a great, a great find.
So, she's, is a bad teacher supposed to be empty?
I've worked with Rachel. We have a...
Should be appreciated.
We have four important like...
She'll take notice.
And then, the other question is, can, is she qualified to do anything with the English language? Do you need it?
She speaks Spanish.
No. She's not licensed, she's not a licensed ESL teacher. So, if you're talking about it, like Heidi Pancake, who's our ESL instructor, she is a licensed ESL teacher. Is there a certification, a license for that? She has that. This woman does not.
What's the process to have her licensed? Is it long, tedious, costly?
It's coursework that she would have to...
Eighteen credits and...
Yeah, and probably internship or practice.
Yeah. So, this woman, we're not hiring her?
No, no, no.
There's no consideration in the past or something to her? Not to be a wise guy around, that's on my jacket, spoke English in London anyway.
So, motion to approve this? Todd, let's try. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ayes.
Move it back. Motion approved. I think I have your monthly report, too.
Yes, my monthly report. Flustered.
Don't let us get to here. We're going to work, hire us, you know.
Then what?
Camera's rolling.
Spanish ours.
So, this monthly report, it's funny, because for several months, we were gaining students, and we were gaining and losing students because of revolving door. This month, we lost three students. A brother and sister team moved to Benton, and one fifth grader moved to...
It wasn't so much of a revolving door for any of you guys. It must have slowed down, you know, finally towards the end of the year.
I had one student move in. I forgot.
I see. You had, yeah, from Hinsdale. And Jen had no activity personally.
So, speaking of ESL, tomorrow night is our annual ESL night, pub lot dinner. So, you have two dinner occasions that, tomorrow night.
Pizza?
Pizza.
Pizza at one time, and...
Multicultural.
Have a very diverse...
What time is yours, Andy?
Ours is...
And what's, what's first?
What's being served?
It's a potluck.
Potluck. Five to six thirty. What are you, what are you making?
I'm sending Karen alone, because our probably raised crispy treats, I just sent. How's that?
Sugarless. Without sugar.
It's not sugar, I really didn't sugar. I'm not supposed to say that.
So, you know, we also had our night right before the break, and we did something new this year. We, on Arts Night, we had band performances in the music room. First, we started with a play. Students brought a play that they brought from the school during the day.
It's like second or third grade.
Yeah. In the evening, they presented to the, to parents in the community. And that ended, and we quickly took the music room, turned it back into a music room, and then the band performed all the while. We had our gala walk going on in the school. It was great, really well-attended. It was really great to see that level of collaboration between so many teachers from the school. It was a fun night for parents. That's it. Anything else should be in my monthly report. I will come later.
And so, just to add on to that, the end of Academy's Art Night, we walked across the crosswalk and had with some of the kids, and had like, did it only open the day before or just that week? Maybe it was Thursday, then opened on Monday? And the paper did cover that, not that particular night, but Peter Elwell came out and Hannah O'Connor, is it? O'Connor? From the public work. So, it was, it took us a while, guys, because I think we started almost a year ahead of that, but we do have a functioning crosswalk. And the, well, the article in the paper, I haven't actually gone to talk to the cross coach, he's very excited about it.
But it's a lighted pedestrian flashing light at the crosswalk.
So, when you push the button, it flashes, flashes.
And I actually watched a vehicle, just a...
Go right through it?
No, I thought it was going to, but then it saw the flash, and it screeched. So, it does clearly draw some attention. Be nice if they were sitting out like on Island Way in the middle and really...
Right in the middle, too.
But that's not possible, I guess, for the state highway at the moment.
How about yours or your's?
Yours.
So, there's just a couple of items. For the SU Finance Committee meeting next Wednesday, the third case?
Yes.
We have scheduled a supervisory union board meeting for May 28th. It's a Thursday in Hutton at 6:30.
Supervisory what?
Supervisory union board meeting.
So, that's a new one that we should all do that?
Well, the three voting numbers.
6:45.
6:30.
6:30.
On the 28th.
May 28th.
So, just as a reminder, who are our voting members?
Kim. But you can come up, you would?
I have a concert.
Oh, well, I probably need to be at the concert.
When was that Finance meeting?
13.
13.
At 5:00. Can we talk about my performance with you?
Yes.
Oh, it was on my schedule already.
What's that?
It was the WSPSU meeting. Was that new?
Oh, yeah, I have it. All right.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like that.
6:30. So, Frank is asking for approval of the board to set up a Rattleburg Town School District Early Ed Services bank account with People's United Bank. And he passes it over to you. But essentially, it's, what he just said to me is, it's to streamline general ledger transaction activity to reduce inter-fund transfer account reconciliations. So, it's really to me...
I imagine why you'd want to read that from Frank.
That's the rationale that he provided for me, to make it simpler. To make it simpler. So one interesting thing is, the note is authorized signers are Frank, myself, and John O'Connor for the elected town and school district. So it's fairly straightforward. The motion would be to approve People's United Bank account resolution to establish a municipal checking account to process early ed services transactions and to assign authorized check signers.
Did you get all that, Jane?
No.
Then I can give it to you.
It requires a signature by Jill.
Jill has a page in there that.
So who would like to make the motion?
I will make the motion. I second the motion.
Is there any discussion on this one? All in favor? Okay, Ron, that's.
So I'll come back when you want to talk about.
Oh, let's see, on the agenda somewhere.
We'll talk about the school improvement plans and class size averages.
So we're going to committee reports? I think the only thing from EES Policy Council is that Kim has now gone to her first official meeting. And I went to my last official meeting and then attended the World Cafe so that there was some continuity and Kim couldn't be there for that. Back to Ron, so it brings us to Energy Committee?
Energy, we had the, mostly the board met a couple of Mondays ago. Their fault, and it was to approve the bid process.
Oh, is that Energy, I guess, yeah, just.
Yeah, it's Energy, yeah. And one of the things that came out of that was the necessity to make sure that the controls people and the installation people, none of us talk to each other a little more closely than we have in the past. So we don't come up with the controls difficulty that we've currently experienced.
All right, Finance, do you have a shot?
Yeah, I know we're moving right along. Frank, at the Finance meeting last week, presented the audit report, and we are good. There were five, there was four or five notes that were made, and they were all relatively minor and quickly correct. And when we left the meeting, Frank was sweating the fact that he had two federal audits coming down.
Yeah, Tuesday this week.
Was it Tuesday this week, yesterday, or next week?
It's coming Tuesday.
Next week. And that was, I can't even probably, was it one Title I, right?
It's all of the consolidated federal grants. So it's Title I, Title II, it's the special ed IDA, it's Perkins Grants. So it's a big.
So the spirit of the grants is being followed, if not, that the actual letter of the grant requirements.
All right.
I think that's it.
Diversity, anything? It's coming up.
I'm supposed to be on that, I think you were gonna put me on, and I'm not.
Well, we met today, and we processed the celebrating diversity activity that went on this Friday. And it seemed like a really good turnout. We had rented the River Garden, had a number of performances starting at 5 o'clock through 8:00 PM. Had a lot of artwork, and some of the poetry work that students had done earlier were displayed in the River Garden. And so I will get you on.
Yes.
Any other committee reports? Moving on to unfinished business, other, etc.
I would say all our other ones are gonna go into new business.
Anybody else have any unfinished? Moving on to new business. Can I do one before we even start this? Just that this week, I did this last year, and I want to do it again this year. This week is staff and teacher appreciation week. So last year, we just had a motion to formally recognize the staff and teachers of our district and thank them for their work and then ask likely if you all would get that. I could send it to you email if you wish, but to get it to your staff, that the board actually would like to commit it. So I guess I make that as an official motion that we commend and acknowledge the good work that's being done by our teachers and staff, including the administrators. So that's a motion.
Second?
Any discussion? An approval? I'll say aye.
Do we have the papers and all of this as out there? Recognize all these teachers and staff.
And I can send it, I can send it over to. And then I'll copy you guys' items so you can.
And then you have VCTV.
Yes.
Okay, and so now we can go into 1%.
So you would have got these a couple of weeks ago?
Several weeks ago.
Yeah. As is the practice, we'd ask you to sign the originals. I don't know how you want.
So I guess I'll open it with, is there anybody that hadn't read anything and had any questions or discussion on anything specific?
Just, I noticed that some of the, some of the activities are, they're gonna be producing things that might be shareable or scalable across the district. The number one under Academy, the job share, if anybody else, they're working through the dynamics of sharing a job. If it might be nice if there's some template or some checklist comes out of it, it'd be very helpful for people to anticipate. They mentioned we had more of that. And then the fourth grade curriculum units, that could be shared with the other fourth grade. In fact, I think there is another fourth grade group someplace. Yeah, fourth grade curriculum planning in Green Street. I don't know if they, if you know, they're, I'll go through it after, it's almost like a grade level. I don't know what, it seems like that could be, might be done together. But again, a useful product. Oh, no, the other one was building consistency with iPads. Anything, any product that comes out of that or knowledge that comes out of that. Obviously, everybody's, if it's not an iPad, it's gonna be a Chromebook. Same basic, same basic idea. And then. The fourth grade curriculum planning. Oh, I did say that one. That seems, there's, the Green Street and. We've seen Academy people are doing fourth grade curriculum planning around, I think it was around integrating social studies and science into literacy. I think it's basically the same work, but it just seemed like work together. And then there was the New Generation Science, the kindergarten New Generation Science, the Academy kindergarten teachers are doing that and math. So it seems like a great opportunity for people to work together. Oh, the improvements for school nurse and substitutes and standardizing forms. I mean, that seemed to be something, it makes sense to have those things, but it seemed like, I mean, teachers are pretty much required to have subplans. And I'm not sure if it's different for a nurse or it should be different for a nurse or if. Well, that just seemed a little bit out of the routine, it's not a proposal that we typically see. So I just wonder if there's any reason for that. I've already thought about why, why that particular. Why that's a 1% rather than just expect to partner.
Which school was the nursing?
Green Street.
Ah, Green Street.
So do you have any answer maybe?
Well, it's a collaboration between Green Street and Opro. Essentially, the application is not just for them individually, but improving practices at all the schools in terms of protocols around having substitute nurse in your office. Kind of a unique position. They come across a lot of different things. And in fact, this year, some things have come up in nurses' offices, and I think just really streamlining and getting clinical about responses to certain things.
Do we train nurses among the system?
When you have questions.
Does each, each school has its own?
Each school has its. Right, certain nurse, right.
So it's kind of another example of things becoming much more complicated with the avenue for protocols and checklists.
Yeah.
Yeah, as I look at their justification sheets, some pretty good information here about what they're hoping to do, what to develop. Yeah, I know it's a great proposal, just, I just had a question about why it was difficult in some way, but clearly it is, and it's us. It needs to be the same in all three pillars.
My only note on this was that it was really nice the way it was broken out, the regular and the special ed, and then the total amounts. So I know sometimes, at least for us, I've done here, we get to approving these and we don't really know how much there is and all that, so thank you for that.
So Barb was instrumental in pulling that together. I think with the timeframe that the principals worked on this and got it together with Barb, to be able to do that is really helpful.
Can I ask a new coming up question?
Yeah.
So what pool of money does this come from?
So in the budget, we have what we call a 1% fund. And it's 1% of the district's. Yeah, the base teacher rate. So there's some language in here, the teachers contract. So the 1% funds that are voted on annually and supported really provides teachers with professional development and other activities that wouldn't normally be funded. So it's a really great program here. It gets our teachers actively involved in these types of initiatives.
Creative endeavors.
And things like the Middle School Leadership Institute, that's something that every, all the schools are participating.
It's money that's already tagged.
It's 1% of our salary of the district.
This isn't going over that.
No. And usually it's.
It's a percentage of it.
We do it in the fall of the school. There's usually a final dollar amount with the.
That's here.
So it's a really great way in my mind to get professional development with teachers tied to an area of interest. And, you know, there's a justification that, you know, it needs to fit into the school action plan, the SU action plan, and they really do. There'll be some times that principals will look at these and weed them out, saying it just doesn't fit. Or there's some times where principals need to come together and say, based on the money that we have, we have to pay back some of the days.
And there's kind of a unwritten rule that it's usually only two staff days or something that everyone. We collaborate quite a bit.
We make quite a few reductions.
So before they come to us, the principals are pretty well streamlined.
Yeah.
What is happening?
I think it's kind of humorous on some levels because we get to ask questions and we often do, and sometimes we've been really specific on these and gone through a lot of questioning. What is a very small amount of money of the total budget? But I think it's the only time the board really ever gets to look at this, my new level, and have a lot of input. So I guess that's why we kind of do imagine what it'd be like if we sat down with all of that.
I just, from looking at all the numbers when I first came on, it's just so many numbers, it's hard for me to see an isolated category go. That plugs into page 14.
Yeah, no.
Halfway down on the left, I don't. It's just good to put it in place and know that it's accounted for.
So is there a motion to approve these?
So moved.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor? I need to sign it?
Yeah, you can sign it.
Just one?
Yeah.
Our run, school improvement plans update assessment update?
Yeah.
Do I need to sign each one? Ron?
I'm sorry?
Have to sign each one?
Yeah.
Chairman?
Pass it on.
Is it chairman and clerk?
It's just the chair. So when we did our work plan last year, summer, we had school improvement action plans update, assessment updates. And I guess, as we, I talked to the principal about this last week, that we thought maybe to provide an overview of some of the initiatives that are part of the action plan. And I'm gonna turn it over to principals, and we're gonna be doing more of this as we go. I think it was in November that we actually talked about some action planning work, and then this would be a good time to do an update.
So one thing that I did, I provided a brief overview, I have to kind of brief overview of what MTSS is, because I think that'd be helpful in this discussion about as the different principals present different parts of the action plan.
Go.
Okay, I'll start with that, so I'm gonna, these are the multi-tiered systems of support is guided by 10 guiding principles, and it's coming to you. And.
PLES.
PLES.
That's losing.
It's the pills. Can you just pass this part, pass the color ones on to the board?
Because somewhere in education, you all decided that you cannot possibly use all the letters that are in the alphabet.
Tell me about it, right?
Yeah.
It's the MTSS RTII, I think this one is. RTI, no, I don't know what that is.
Okay, whose acronym, control.
Okay, so multi-tiered systems of support, I'm passing around an excerpt of a PowerPoint that we've done as part of staff development at Opro. And really helping everybody in the school community understand what multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS is. If you want to color one data.
No, I'm not with you.
Okay. So really, if you look at, this is a continuum on PowerPoint, it shows up in different places.
One. You see it.
Over the course of history, education changes so much, and you have different jargon, as you've pointed out, and different movements that come along. And I think MTSS is really an accumulation of different approaches to instruction that has been more and more refined as we learn more and work more with data, especially among students. So if you look at this first continuum here, we start with what a lot of people call tracking. And tracking was the idea that we had homogeneous groups, and people would group, kids would group by ability. I believe I was a bluebird at one point in my reading groups. I don't know, I think it was eagles though, I don't know, it was not great.
I don't know, Rob.
Was there a pigeon or a crow or like, who knows?
Crows are very intelligent.
I'll take it.
Yeah, I was a bluebird.
So there's a lot of things, by doing tracking, you could focus in on instructions and really target instruction because you have learners that were pretty good profiles or similar. So you could address that kind of targeted instruction with that group. Drawbacks to that, and I try to put it in green and red, hang up those visuals, the red with that, there's a lack of mobility. And really, a lot of the achievement gap work that we've done in the last 15 years is as you targeted the high group and the low group and the middle group, since there wasn't mobility within those groups, students ended up kind of sticking with that group, and it was hard to change that. And that's both from less expectations, it was kind of a lower expectations for different groups. It had to do with modifying instructions, but also just what we've learned are social norms that have changed as you knew if you were a bluebird or a crow or a morning duck or whatever. So we went from tracking and education really changed into differentiation. And so now, in differentiation, I'm probably putting you back about 15 years. And that's the idea that you had mixed groups within the classroom, but that all students are educated in the classroom, exposed to high quality instruction. So the responsibility was on the teacher to have, if they had 25 kids in a room, that you might have 25 or five levels of instruction for those 25. And it's a.
Don't it?
Yeah. A huge task for any teacher, and what it meant was, when you're doing so many things, it's hard to do so many things well. And also, kids weren't receiving the same curriculum, they weren't receiving the same instruction because they were, the differentiation led to that. So there was a loss of economic curriculum for students, and then there was, the studies have shown, a lot of research showed, that this method led to kind of a dumb down, for lack of a better term, curriculum, because they had to be watered down in order for everyone to be able to access it and a teacher to manage that level within the classroom. And the studies have shown, does differentiation really happen like it was intended? And the answer is no. In some subjects, yes, with some teachers, yes, but in every subject, all day, with every teacher?
Too, aren't they?
It's, yeah, that's why, I'm not gonna be able to pronounce the word I want to, so I'll. So now we're moving into multi-tiered systems of support, which is MTSS, and we're really looking at mixed groupings within the classroom, access to high expectations and high quality instruction for all. And that targeted instruction is based on individual student's level of performance, so that's where your data comes in. It's about how we've been working with data, and we've shared a lot about that, but how we use data to inform the instruction we have in the classroom, and what that does for the classroom teacher, how they provide support. support, but also that every student is getting that, say, core instruction together, and then how we address that. And I'll come back to that. But clear, common curriculum, clear common curriculum and expectations is the high, the highlight of that. So if you flip it over to this really funny triangle on the next page. We talk a lot about multi-tiered systems of support being multiple tiers. And this triangle's a little funny. You often see the green, yellow, red, but they've added a blue, of course they have, a little blue triangle on the body, because that's the enrichment, and it's like two-sided. So, and I won't read it to you, but it's really this idea that within regular core curriculum, every student is getting access to the same curriculum, but you are modifying the instruction based on student need. So I notice like, how's this different than differentiation? And it is in that small group instruction is provided beyond the common core, or I'm sorry, beyond the core one or tier one instruction. So for instance, every student might be in the classroom for the main lesson on reading, on a reading curriculum, on a reading lesson for the day. And they might all have the same book, but the oral lesson or the interactive whiteboard lesson, or the give and take of a foundation lesson, let's say, is happening at the same time. And then small group happens within the classroom with all students present, with different supports in place. So what you're seeing is it might be a doubled up, it might be guided practice, it might be different instructional technique. And then also is a time when you can provide enrichment. So enrichment is in a separate thing that's pulled out, and intervention is in a separate thing that's pulled out. I know I'm going over a lot, these are huge concepts, but if you, my last page, or actually my central last page, is about the core concepts of MTSS. And I want to, I, I mean, you can read the core concepts. All students are capable of meeting the standard. For every curriculum concept, there needs to be aligned intervention and enrichment opportunities. And here's where a big difference is, it's not in differentiating that every lesson has to look different for every student or every group. They did it for core, I am so funny, right now, I'm kidding. For every curriculum concept, for the main ideas of like, maybe you're teaching author's purpose in a reading group, or maybe you're teaching paragraph writing, the concept is differentiated for kids, but the actual lesson plan may look different, or it may look very similar, depending on the needs of the students. Rather than, and this is such a distinction, and I think it's sometimes I still wrap my head around, but rather than modifying our curriculum expectations of what we think kids can do, we are modifying the supports they need. So everybody's getting that same concept and that same access to that bigger, richer curriculum, but we're giving them different supports. So it might be about vocabulary, background vocabulary, or it might be about double dosing foundations if it's a literacy issue. You know, we're giving that to them so they can access it in all together. And then all decisions are made based on, all programming decisions are made based on that. So that's my, welcome to the world of education, but this is like a really meaty, heavy concept that I think we're all adjusting to how we do this and how we can do it well. And I know it's going to be reflected in all of our action plans. But I just wanted to give that overview before we talk about our individual plans around this, and then share with you, actually, the 10 guiding principles that are really guiding this work around what we believe MTSS could be for our students.
So as a supervisor reunion, you've opted this model, and it's really through work like with Jen and Mark and Andy that it's taken hold. It just strikes me, as I think about this, I was at a Southeast superintendent's meeting, and one of the persons from a different district was trying to figure out how their district could embrace this. And I said, you know, there's, and not knowing, the person not knowing that there's a structure in place that the state has helped us with quite a bit. And some of our schools are working with the state liaison, Judy Maynard, to do this work, and they're blown away by the work that our teachers and principals are doing. Just a real practical observation, like in terms of the curriculum expectations that Jen just mentioned, I think about like when we had the SD Bill School, where we had a separate program for, you know, challenging behavioral situations, U D students, students with E B D, emotional behavior disturbances. And, you know, what was very obvious to outside auditors from the state was, it was a great program, but it actually changed the curriculum for these kids. And it was almost like, once you're in this program, as a kindergarten, first grade, you can't come back, because it's a whole different curriculum strand. And by the time they went to middle school, there was a middle school co-op and then the high school co-op, and it was like a death sentence, really. So we worked hard to think about that as a transition program, and that's what caused us to start implementing the step programming and PBIS. And this is kind of another evolution to that. And I'm really proud of the work that we're doing as part of our action plan.
I have a question. The support systems, are they sequential to the common core instruction?
Absolutely.
And are they, how can I say this, simultaneous to all the groups, or is that whenever the support is available to a particular group within that structure?
So I'll give you an example of Oco with our reading street curriculum. Yeah, your first answer is yes. These are all common core lines what we do, the curriculum is all there. So a reading street unit might be on natural disasters. So the background vocabulary gets shared with the whole group, we watch a video around natural disasters, we set up our guiding question for the week, you know, how do people respond to natural disasters, or what are some of the impacts, or what are types, you know, something deep off the top of my head. Then they all read, the teacher reads aloud an excerpt or partly informational text, nonfiction around a natural disaster. And then so they have a whole lesson discussion, and all the students have different ways to participate, be part of this conversation about what's a natural disaster. Then we break into groups. And this group might have earthquakes, and this group might have volcanoes, et cetera, et cetera. And the reading levels are adjusted within those different books. So this group is still getting all that rich content about what natural disasters are about, but the reading level is more accessible to them.
Does that happen at the same time?
Yes, all in the same room.
And you have, are there separate support persons for each of those groups, or is it the teacher rotating through the groups as required? Or both, yes?
Both. Yes, and yes, and both. And it depends. I mean, it, we've, I think all of us have worked really hard to develop schedules. For a classroom teacher, when you're going into what we call tier two, which is what the small group would be, that there's a classroom teacher, if possible, a special educator, to do co-teaching, and a title teacher, if they're available, we share those people, and then a parent educator. And the classroom teacher prepares lessons for the parent educator, who then delivers the lessons. You know, so, yeah.
So if you have two classes in a school of fourth graders, and they're all going through the MTSS, is it possible to combine those people within the different groups and have one person cover both for both classrooms, to free up some time for one of the support people or for the teacher to do something else, or to concentrate maybe on an enrichment program?
So in an MTSS model, because it's really a framework, it's not a program, it's really a framework of how you teach. All of us are doing that. So I know at Academy, I can speak to, literacy blocks are lined up, so you can share groups and move kids around and use personnel to their best.
So when you say literacy block, all the fourth graders are going to be put together and sorted out according to where they are, not according to their one classroom? That's Mark's question?
Yeah, it could be. If you have two fourth grade classrooms, 16 students in each classroom.
Yeah.
Okay, you've got hypothetically four different groups, you've got your three primaries, and you've got the enrichment. Shift, one classroom handles levels one and two, the other one, three and four, where, you know, the size of the participation in the classroom stays the same, but those in the individual group are mixed between the two grades.
Yeah, that's much of what we call our skills block, which is a little bit different than the example I gave, but yes. And I would, I'm going to say yes for each of the preschool and academy that that happens. I think the other piece is the enrichment piece, I should have mentioned that too, because that's another part of the group.
Some of the-- Some of the support in your example maybe is, well, somebody doesn't know how to spell the words in the vocabulary unit, so that may be one of the academic sports that's coming in.
And then you have tier three, which in this example that I gave, you might have some students who have significant learning disabilities, that they participate in tier one and tier two, and then sometimes somewhere else during the day, they might get pre-teaching for what they're about to have, and learn some vocabulary before they sit down, so they can access that core curriculum. Or they might have one-on-one support to do more finance instruction, or more fluency instruction and comprehension, so that they're able to access that one and two.
So it's the mobility between the two.
Exactly. And in an old model before the MTSS framework, what you would have probably seen is a special educator coming and getting Mark and taking him out of the room and helping him do a different lesson than what was happening, and Mark was missed.
Which was me, actually.
Yeah. I mean, which made it so Mark missed out on that big discussion and that rich, that rich exposure to the category, but also that sense of community in the classroom.
So I have to admit, when you started this, I was like, oh, la la la, can we go again?
Yeah.
So I'm taking this back now. Because what you--
I don't want to repeat.
No. I got something out of this that I didn't think I would get. Because when we sit at a board, and it's in front of the town reps, and they say, the statement that we all say in our heads as well, when I was a kid, there were 17 kids in the classroom, maybe 25, and we only had one teacher. I have not been able to articulate back until just now, why there would be a need for more people in the classroom. And I think that's a fundamental answer of that question. Every single person, we've done as board members, you guys have done as administrators, much more so, somebody who's a town rep or somebody who's not involved at all in the decisions of how much the budget is, says that. When I was a kid, that's, that is where we all go back to for education, because unless you work in it all the time, that was kind of your life for 18 years or so, or 25, or whatever it was, and then you're done. You don't go back into that world. So to be able to somehow explain this, I think has to be part of our presentation. Because when Dave says to them, and everybody's a little light bulbs, you saw it this year, Dave says, well, poverty's driving this, folks. That's a nice little soundbite, but it doesn't, it doesn't exemplify and really show you. So for, somehow, please remember this, when we get to the March--
From where did that?
Meetings, this is the type of thing to be able to show them. And to make, to make it really understandable, it's going to have to be broken down more than what we just heard, without being, you know, hours upon hours of explanation of something that people are like, oh boy, here's another acronym that I don't want--
We hear that a lot, and if you're my age, you know, look, if you didn't pay for TV, you had three channels, and you better change, change the title, change the channel. Now TV costs a hundred fifty dollars a year for a channel. When I was 17, I pulled the engine out of my car with a couple of buddies with a socket set and a chain. Today, you know, I wouldn't even know what the air filter is, and it's fucking up the computer. So everything's changed dramatically, you know, dramatically, including education. And we look at education back when, if you were, again, my generation, the dropout in the SIS was around 50%. It got, it reached its highest point during the Vietnam War. So my generation avoided going to war, I think, staying in high school. And so, we didn't surpass that rate until the last couple of years, last two years. And the reason that kids aren't dropping out now is because, as Jen said, we're educating all of them. All, you know, we'll find ways to lead the kids where they're at when they come to us, to educate all of them through systems like MTSS, RTI.
And those are two examples, again, you know, like the car or whatever. But I, I think we all accept that cars change, or TVs change. We have a harder time somehow getting back to what's doing, what's going on that's different in a classroom. So for whatever reason it is, for people who are not in it every single day, it's a harder sell, it's a harder thing to ride along the track.
If I can jump back, and Dan and I, we share about the same generation, the kids that were--
Pardon?
Yeah, we were on the back of a shovel with chalk.
Absolutely contemporaries.
The kids that this program would be aimed at back then weren't even in the classroom. You know, they were, as you had mentioned, they were not ahead of it. We never saw them.
They were in the basement.
Someplace. We didn't know what they were, but they were not in our classroom. And there may be some slight adjustments above, about the people in the classroom, but essentially they're all functioning at the same level.
Well, and two more pieces I just want to make sure I highlight is, when we talk about those groups, Mark, and you talk about the different levels, we use data. Those groups might change every five days, they might change every two weeks. As a skill masters a skill, we have that sophisticated level of data to say, okay, you're ready to move here, and we're going to move you back, or this is the skill you've conquered. And that has changed how we educate our kids. The second piece I just want to point out is that MTSS as a framework includes this same level of sophistication, thinking this way is a real behavior as well. So the work around PBIS, positive behavior interventions and supports, is all under MTSS as well. And thinking about students in this way, of every student getting this base core tier one behavior modifications, and then what's tier two? How do you change behavior when it's a little bit off, or a kid needs a little extra support? And then tier three are the kind of the high flyer kids that need an individualized plan. So I mean, this is much how, the MTSS framework is how we're guiding our school practice, beyond academics.
I didn't realize that, because we got that presentation from Shelley. I thought it was actually just a behavioral framework. So it's kind of cool that it's--
Interrelated.
Yeah. Because really, the results and the reactions you get from kids aren't separated, like the behavior and the academic and the learning and the environment, and what they're bringing in culturally from outside, and what they're experiencing inside effect, learning, and it's all related.
And what they're available.
So it's nice to know that it's an overarching framework.
So, thank you. I didn't need to, I hope that helped, anyway, so.
Helps, that's good.
Did we have anything else? Time needs to leave, so is there anything else we need to vote in?
Early kindergarten requests.
Yes, we need to vote, so can we jump to that, so that we can, still there?
So, the, for older kindergarten students, the cut-off date is typically five by September 1. Policy says if parents want to request a waiver on that early admission, for students who are born after September 1, but before November 1, that they can request that. We have a procedure where we test, we do initial tests with the kids called the GESL, and then we are to recommend those kids to you. The decision is yours. Okay? And I think we have a total of five students. Are you--
Here, we have one that's in there.
Oh, you have two? Oh.
Are these named students, or do we have to go--
They're all named, but we're not going to give you names. We're going to say student one. Okay. Student one is a student we're recommending, her name's, she's a 10.
What's that?
92910. So she is born at the end of September. And her GESL, and all indications are that she would do, she would do fine. I know the time is of the essence, I'm not going to throw up a bunch of information about the kids unless you want.
So your recommendation is yes?
Yes. And all these here, we'll be recommending yes.
Okay.
Until I say no.
Thank you.
To vote on it in the legislature.
We usually vote as a group to accept or not--
Accept the recommendation.
Or not accept.
Who affirm a principal's decision.
But then I have a set of twins, who were, their birthday, I think, was September 2nd. So they're one day shy. Each of these youngsters, the GESL supports early entrance.
Yeah.
Now, the fourth one that I recommend, who's coming to Academy, is a student who does not speak English. She's an ESL student who is presently at Genell Street. She is not, her birthday is, she's young. We didn't test her in the language department. However, we've met with everybody involved in this, and the best thing to do for this child was to bring her into Academy School with an ESL program. It's not an ESL program, an ESL program, she cannot communicate. It's really not just a achievement there, so we need to bring her on board.
And that supports that, too.
Would that be like in a pre-k capacity?
Yeah.
How young is young?
How young is young? I mean, she's still five.
She's late in October.
Oh, wow. It's not like she's a year old or something.
Yeah, no, talking about her mom.
Yeah, that's good. So she falls within a sixty-day period. Okay?
Sorry, if you want me to put those in, I'm sorry.
So there's a, I don't have any no's, and this was a, this is a yes from Academy.
This is for Oak Grove, so this student's birthday is September second. Her Giselle shows that she is right on par before she should be. She's looking to go to Oak Grove. So her T-bodies are in Giselle, Giselle's also that she's ready.
Is she the missing twin from the others?
The twins were both, yeah, the twins were together, thank you.
I'm indicating, but both twins.
Well, I understand, yeah, that's just, yes. Put them all together.
So I can present, this student is actually, as a team, they're not requesting any particular school, but what we, we found this child, the birthday was nine, is nine twenty-one, but this child, based on the Giselle, is actually below her average, where she should be. She's an average four-year-old. So where she's four and a half years old, her Giselle showed that she's about equivalent to four years one month with her needs. So she's not ready for kindergarten, based on what we saw on her T-bodies and her Giselle. So we are recommending that you don't accept this one, since, since six.
Okay. So are, we would need an official motion to accept the recommendations of the principals?
I, I agree that we accept the recommendations of the principals for the aforementioned students.
And is there seconds?
A second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Hey, you're not gonna mix up the four of them.
No. Someone's need an honor agenda. I can't cross it all. Have to write it down to cross.
So there's six of those altogether.
I think that's it, so. What was the other thing?
Just to give us this information.
Six students, five years.
Thanks.
Take care, Todd.
All right, where did we break off? Was there something else on the...
No, we're gonna, we're gonna do more on the action plans as, as we go, so that'll be enough for tonight, and then, you know. So you had asked...
We all handle so much information.
You had asked about class sizes. This is an update.
What's a cluster?
Do you want to explain? Is reading smaller in a group?
It's like a bunch of grades.
Yeah. So if you look in the side that says, W S E S U Supervisor Union, that's from a model policy or required policy that the Agency of Education provided 2011 and 12. So this is just an update on what they, what they feel is the state board's maximum average per grade cluster. So K two is a grade level cluster, kindergarten first and second grade. Twenty kids would be maximum, per teacher. Three, four, those grades, again, twenty. And then five, six, twenty-five. And so what you have are the actual averages by our supervisor union, in terms of act, the, the third column over, actual average range per grade cluster. So that's all the schools in the supervisor union. K twelve, one class is small at eleven, high one is at twenty-two. Grades three and four, twelve is a low class, twenty is high, and five, six, thirteen is a low, and twenty-two is high. So if you flip it over, and you, and you can, you can...
Can flip, flip back for a second?
Yeah.
It says kindergarten, ten classrooms, so throughout our union, we only have ten. So there are some places where we don't have two in each area.
Yeah, I mean, like the outlying schools, it's one kindergarten.
But there's ten classrooms, and then there's twelve grade one classrooms. So there are some schools that are not having a kindergarten classroom, or how do you come up with...
They all have kindergarten classrooms. There may be some grade ones that have two strands. Yeah. And in Academy's case, it's three strands.
And then maybe the next year, they have one less at some school, because the numbers are staying constant. That's the right question.
But there would be, we have six kindergartens, and then there are four outlying schools, which would make the ten.
Yeah.
So if there's eleven, one of those schools has two of one of the, whatever the grade...
Well, my point being that somebody is dealing with fluctuation every year.
Yeah, definitely. And the smaller schools tend to do that. So if you flip and look at Brattleboro Town Schools and strictly class size, it's broken up by grade, but then we have the average grade level cluster. So kindergarten, which is kind of surprising that we have the low numbers in kindergarten. I know when we started the school year, like Oak Grove as an example, had nineteen or twenty students.
And you guys were packed.
It's, it's down to thirteen. And, you know, part of that is for transition, families moving, transitioned population. In some cases, it's, it's because of out-of-district placements. Throughout this whole chart, we have eleven students that are in outside placements. But, you know, when we look at, like, next year's kindergarten classes, we're looking at twenty at Oak Grove, and probably an average of seventeen and eighteen in Academy and Green Street. And I think there are still a number that are not accounted for. So, you know, as you look at the previous year, grade one, that's typically the numbers that we've had in kindergarten, seventeen, eighteen, you know, to twenty. And so I suspect next year, we're gonna have class sizes of eighteen to twenty. So, you know, one, one question might be, you know, so like with, with a low enrollment kindergarten, couldn't you send five students over to Oak Grove and have Green Street have just one strand and eliminate a teacher? You know, somebody that's just looking at numbers could, could try to make that case. I would say no, because when you started the year with nineteen, and I think in Green Street, you know, we've lost staff or kids.
So that was my other question. Could we see that? The nine-five, two thousand fourteen numbers? I mean, you know what you started the year with, right?
We can generate that, yeah.
I just think it'd be interesting. Again, when we talk to the town reps, and we're talking about the budget, and we're looking at this, it's an interesting fact that we have such trends going on in this town.
You know, this is, this is what we needed, because it sort of reinforces one of the contentions, is that there are forty-two classrooms, Brattleboro Town Schools. If we lost one kid out of each classroom, which would be forty-two students, I don't know what percentage of our total enrollment that would be, roughly twenty percent? No.
Seven hundred and fifty kids, so.
It's, it's not gonna reduce, you know, that much. So twenty, two hundred, we could lose five out of each class, basically, and we're not...
I mean, I, I think there's a lot that you can do with this, I just wanted to make sure that, that you had the information, we're gonna follow up with this as well. But so like, the class size average for kindergarten is fifteen point one, fifteen point two. You actually wanna try to keep primary grades low, if you can. But when you look at grade one at seventeen and a half, grade two almost twenty, the average cluster is seventeen point four five, and if you compare that to the district, it's, it's a lot higher than the district average.
So we got a bubble thing up in the secondary.
So then when you look at three, four, you know, third grade, you get about fifteen kids per class, fourth grade, sixteen, so grade level cluster of six, fifteen and a half. Again, if you compare that to the other side...
Do we have any idea of how many children will be coming in on kindergarten?
Yeah, as I said, we think it's gonna be about eighteen to twenty per section.
Okay, so we're, we might actually be looking at an increase in our students.
When...
Well, we're gonna lose them in the sixth grade, but we're picking them up in kindergarten, which would make it the third out of four classes that is cohorts, which is an increase. So our class sizes are actually increasing, or potentially could increase.
And what's the day?
We'll see.
What's the snapshot day that the state takes?
October, it's in October, then at the end of that report by November.
I just tried, I didn't, I am amazed at the amount of in and out.
Oh, yeah.
That's typical in Brattleboro Town.
I wonder if you, I mean, I'm curious to see if, like, next year, this just all shifts over one, and these kind of stay the same, or is it just, I mean, if we can look back a few years, and just have, like, is the, do these numbers really vary year to year significantly, or do they kind of stay? Like, we have a large grade two, next year, will the grade, or last year was grade one large, or did much kids come in like nineteen?
So I, I actually did that for Oak Grove, just because we're so small, I can actually do it just by looking at the records.
This is very sta, it's really helpful and interesting, but it's very static, and it doesn't tell you really what's, what's, what's happening, unless there's an increase in kids.
One of the great things about technology is on Power School, like, a student moves and they take down a system, you have instant data, so you don't necessarily have a record of that data that that student was there. So it's a little more difficult to keep track of this kind of information.
Yeah. To do what the state does, is some snapshot data.
Right. So I've had, I look at kindergarten as an example on this, that I started the year with nineteen, out of twenty, and six moved out, almost a district placement, one student moved in and has already left, before this year's over. So I had to go back and I just looked at the data at each classroom from the beginning of the year, how many students I had, how many students were brand new that I didn't know the year before, and how many moved out this year. And so that's what this chart is. And you'll see that there's, I mean, we didn't, we don't have a number in every column, but we have significant numbers. So then I looked at my current fourth grade, who I've had since kindergarten, and I could go back and say, I remember these kids who was here. And out of that class, that current fourth grade class, in kindergarten, we had twenty students who finished the year, right, twenty students. That same class has nineteen students in it now, but only eight of those students are from that kindergarten class.
That's amazing, Tim.
And that's not accounted, fourth grade, this is my fifth year. So this, that doesn't account for kids who came in first grade and left in second, or came in second and left in third. So, because I don't count that data, unfortunately.
Is that, does that happen in the rest of the...
It's shocking.
The level of poverty that we have, you get a large contingent of population, you get people moving in and out. That is consistent with high levels of poverty.
Did this surprise you when you pulled it?
That it was only eight?
That it was only eight, yeah.
That left, I mean, because...
And the twelve kids had to get integrated into one system in the school along that way. And when they got to fourth grade, were they ready for fourth?
Yep.
When we, when we look at academic, well, we look at how students are doing, we see distinct differences. Those students who are with us, the longer they're with us, the better they will do. So when we look at a cohort group over a three-year period, for example, so we look at a group of kids, third, fourth, and then fifth grade, you might have, let me start with, fifty-five. But when you look at that same group in, in fifth grade, you take out any, you don't look at anyone who's come in new, and any kids who left, obviously, they're out. So then when you look at them in, in the fifth grade, you have to down to forty-five. Okay? When we look at those forty-five who were with us for that period of time, over this, you know, if their whole school's there, they are significantly different than those kids who come and go, or who...
So you know those, can you show us? Where you show the, the non-pre-reduced lunch and the cohorts? Can you show us that cohort? Can you break that out over here?
We can do cohort group, yeah. We can show you cohort groups, we do that now. Look, because that's a true measure of our instruction and our support. That's a true measure of all the things that we do. And the reason, I'll mention the reason that it's there is because there are, there are not other school systems in the state of Vermont that are doing what they're doing. Go find a little school system that has the kinds of supports that we have. The tunnel one teachers, the academic support teachers, the special educators, also office, Spanish, drama, all the kinds of things we offer to make a...
Violin.
Yeah, all, right, all the music programs, the arts programs, all of that, we're, you know, just, we have no parallel to that. So the kids do so well with us.
So when a student moves out of our district, into somebody else's district, the other district's getting a value-added kid.
Well, but there, the kid is coming into a different system, maybe a different curriculum, different, and the cohort can moderate some of that, but...
Well, it becomes a statewide coordination.
And to be fair, kids that are in the, that live in the same area, in the same home for six years, as opposed to jumping, are gonna perform a lot better. Whereas, not to take away what you said, but that's, that family stability is huge in terms of...
Ron, with your notes that you were taking to remember for March, I think you should remember this conversation, Tim. Because that's another huge shift from when people were younger. And we just didn't move like we do now, but beyond that normal fluctuations, I think Brattleboro is unique there. Perhaps not, maybe, I don't know.
Specifically reflects... Jen, did you look at other grades, and was this, or you just looked at that, and there it was? Is this an outlier, or?
No, it's not, it's definitely not an outlier, but I just knew that I could go back, because the data isn't there.
Cause you know, last door, yes.
I was like, I know, I know these skills, so I sat in fourth grade and thought about it and went back and went to the bar.
So like, Andy, you couldn't pull that together for that same, same type of analysis?
Well, it is a game, too, I can do it.
With your data. But do in the, don't do it now, but, but it would really be fascinating to...
It's not there automatically, it's...
Finding a way to communicate the effect of that, provokers, just not to mention the legislature.
The steady numbers in terms of the average class sizes and the grade, grade level clusters. You know, it's not, it's not reasonable to say, if we, if we lost thirty kids that were the table that we...
Believe we can't reduce size class, as a labor sector.
So we'll give you more on this as we get further along. The only other thing I had is, and I think you've already seen it, just the grade level feedback forms that Lyle had sent to you.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, the, from the...
Passing.
Yeah, we haven't talked about them, but I hope you do get a chance to look at them. Really good information. Just shows the professional development that's done during those grade level release days, and, you know, the acknowledgement of Shelley and the work that she's done over the beginning of...
We did look at them.
Yeah, well, maybe just, I thought we talked about them.
Cause I remember, well, I remember the, the...
Maybe Ron was...
I remember the consistency as a response, in terms of the value of it.
I remember you missing, but I remember us talking about them.
Okay, so it's good that you have them, and, you know, just kind of refer to them as, as you, people ask, well, what do you do during professional development? It shows that the teachers are really engaged in this work.
And they know what they need, and they're asking for it.
Yeah, which is great.
Is there anything else? Next agenda items? Just, so we don't forget, if you guys could do the nine, that data, the same data as of the beginning of the year, that you, the Power School, you can pull that from Power School, right?
You can't.
You can't?
You can't. I mean, it's not easy, and I think that's why I volunteered to be the example, because it was pretty time consuming.
No, not your example, but the same thing, that same sheet that says here.
Yeah, that's, I, I'm...
This one, that's as of five, six. Can you pull that, go back and pull it, and say what you started the year with, from nine, one, or the class sizes?
What were collecting names? So what I had to do was go through...
No, I just want this.
So what we started the year with, and where we are right now.
You can do that, right? Without, I mean, the Power School stored that?
Each, each class, classroom A in kindergarten, today is September first, it was F.
Yeah.
And you can do it, just like taking copies out of spreadsheets, yeah, so, great.
So can, for the next agenda, can I put that down, that you could just follow up and give us that, just so we had it, and not lost, lose that on the trail?
We're talking about a...
We're already planning for town meeting.
A starting date, and then a rolling monthly...
I just wanna see the starting date.
So what happens in the...
Starting date, and I think May is reasonable, you don't have to look at the end of the year, May is close enough.
If we could have a...
But that won't reflect this, even though, like, moving annual classes, that, that right now, start at seventeen, and there, there's still seventeen, but...
People were in and out.
Four kids came.
Have we noticed, or have you, did people notice any type of seasonality to the increase or decrease in students over the course of the year?
Yeah, it seemed like February or March.
Do we lose more?
Beginning of the year, there's a lot of coming and going. Over the holidays, seems like there is...
These are permanent disappearances or additions, or whatever?
I still wanna see anything, just because it's a question of what you're planning for a year, this is what we heard, to be in this, so we have this. Anything else for the agenda for next week that you guys want to follow up on?
Let's see what's on it. Kindergarten placement readiness. Did we do that?
We already did the admissions?
No. So we're a week, two weeks ahead.
No, absolutely not. Kindergarten readiness?
It says kindergarten placement, class size readiness for May twenty.
I think that came out a couple of years ago, when you guys were still concerned in what was coming, and that...
Yeah. And we're going to do enough data to actually continue the action plans.
I think that was from EES talking about the readiness and the discussions of the preschool. I think that...
We got anything big coming along, like free breakfast, universal free breakfast?
You guys want to try that breakfast at the Reno again, right?
No, we don't. Not necessary.
All right, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn if we don't have anything else.
So do.
And we're done.